This application will be heard in, usually I say in the order it was received, but tonight you're the only one here, so you will be heard. Number one, the petitioner or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to this board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties in interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition, and the board may receive similar written communications that are placed on the public record. Petitioner will be given the opportunity to refute any such remarks. The decision is typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed, there's a 20-day appeal period. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you're at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone to ensure you are on record. Cell phone videotaping is not permitted without first notifying the commissioner of the ZBA Board. The commissioner must then announce videotaping is occurring. It may no way be disruptive. These meetings are broadcast on Channel 9 and live on Facebook. Meeting minutes are made public. And I will now introduce the board. To my left is the Secretary, De'N Sensabaugh, Vice Chair Steve Zalotis, Barry Osborne, Julie Picardi, and Ed Colbert. And we will now have the Secretary read our legal ad.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 29, 7:00 p.m. in the Auditorium, City Hall, 20th and Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of JAM 3 LLC for a Chapter 40b comprehensive permit application as it applies to the premises known as 55 Newbury Port Turnpike, Peabody, Mass., map 78, Lot 16. Petitioner seeks to subdivide the lot and construct 60 rental units, properties located in a DDD zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ruth Silman. I'm with the Law Firm of Nixon Peabody, here on behalf of the applicant, JAM 3 LLC. Thank you all for being here this evening. I'd like to acknowledge in particular the tremendous efforts by your staff, staff of the city, and the support of the mayor's office with respect to what we think is a very exciting project. We are here this evening pursuant to Chapter 40b to propose a development for a comprehensive permit. This is known as Newbury Point, located at One Hotel Avenue. Everybody kind of, I think, knows it more as the rear of Newbury Port Turnpike or Route 1, but this project will be to the rear of what is now the Sonic Restaurant. JAM 3 LLC, which I'll just refer to as JAM or the applicant, is a limited dividend organization as required by Chapter 40b. An affiliated entity currently owns the entire site, and the part of the proposal is that the zoning board endorse a subdivision plan, which it has the authority to do under Chapter 40b, to create two separate lots and then enable the development of the parcel at issue here. There will be cross easements for access utilities and drainage to the extent that it is required. The Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development issued a project eligibility letter dated September 6, 2017. That is in your package, and this application is being filed under the local initiative program as a LIP. You'll hear a little bit more about the site conditions from both the project engineer and project architect, but as I said, the project is located to the rear of 55 Newbury Port Turnpike. The existing lot is about two acres and has about 200 feet of frontage on Route 1, as well as about 220 feet of frontage on Hotel Avenue. The proposed subdivided site will be just under one acre, about 0.9 acres, and it's currently an empty parking lot with quite a bit of, most of it is paved as impervious surface right now. The properties in proximity to the site are mostly commercial. There's the six-story Hilton Homewood Suites located just to the north. Obviously, Hotel Avenue is located to the east. Beyond Hotel Avenue, across kind of the divide because the topography drops off quite a bit, is a large multifamily residential complex that you can see across the way. And then there is a commercial building housing a number of retail and restaurant uses, as well as the Marriott Springwood Suites located to the south. So the property is sandwiched between the two hotels. There are no wetlands. This is not a designated flood hazard area. There are no historic resources or districts that are impacted. The site is served by public water, public sewer. Natural gas and electricity service are already present at the site, and as I said earlier, we would, we will create cross easements as needed for access utilities and/or drainage. In terms of, the project architect will speak a little bit more, but let me just give you the basics about the development. It will include 60 rental units. This will be an all rental deal, a total of 91 parking spaces, and, let's see, 15 of the 60 units, or 25%, will be affordable at a rate of 80% of what we call AMI, or the Area Median Income. And so we believe that this project will add needed affordable housing to the City of Peabody and increase the supply of affordable rental housing. I'm happy to go through the requested waivers with you, but think that it probably makes sense to turn this over right now to Greg Monastero, who is the principal of JAM. Have him just speak for a moment, and then you'll hear from the civil engineer and project architect, and then again, whatever questions, level of detail, discussion about requested waivers, however the board would like to proceed. We're happy to do so. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg Monastero, actually the owner of the property, and also we're the owner of the restaurant up front. Do appreciate everyone. We've been working on this for quite a while with the City of Peabody. Tonight they'll go through and they'll display and show you what we're looking at for the topography of the land and also for the building itself. Just for the board's information, we're currently also developing a 40b project just on the other side of the highway on Linfield, so behind the Christmas tree shops. We're currently under construction with that. That's about 120,000 square foot facility and 68 units. Similar type design and concept that does parking under and other items like that. Also happy to address anything other before that we get into just what the site looks like and the building and those type of designs if the board had any questions for me. Great, okay, all right. So maybe at this point, I think the best thing what we can do is maybe go ahead and address and look at the lot, and I'll bring up the civil engineer, and then we can have the architect just address the building. Okay?
Good evening. Rich Harrington from Williams &amp; Sporages, engineer for the project. To your left is the existing conditions plan, and to the right is the proposed conditions. And what we have is we have frontage along Route 1 for Sonic, and right now they enter here, and they come around the building, and they can either queue into the aisles there or park along the perimeter. Their exit back to Route 1 is at this location on the sheer driveway to the abut to the north. They also have the driveway connection out the back of the property along our frontage for the proposed development. In addition, they have this extra parking out back, which also connects at this point to the abutting property. Our proposal is to basically work within this footprint and to also take this driveway and basically push it down in this direction along the, within the side yard setback of 30 feet from the proposed building to the side property line. Currently, right now, the grade at the Route 1 is 10 feet higher than the grade at the gutter at this location for the back road. So water pitches downhill, and it will pitch downhill when we're done. We have basically about an elevation of 158 at this location where we'll be cutting the pavement and proposing our new building. In addition, we have the water service through an easement in front of the building of Sonic that connects to the other buildings. We also have the sewer line, which is gravity into the sewer main within Route 1 to your left or to the west. Our proposal is to not change anything in regards to any of the utilities with Sonic. It's basically to make adjustments to their drainage line that currently connects here and add our connections after we treat that runoff and provide recharge. What I'll also show is, right now, there's one hydrant here. There's about four hydrants around the parking lot to the hotel property to the southeast, and there's additional hydrants to the, to the north. We'll meet with the fire department and go over that locations as well. As you move to the right plan here, the proposed grading and drainage plan, you'll see that what we're proposing is that the, there'll be a separation of the pavement at the property line down the middle. We have a proposed building footprint, which the architect will speak about, and as mentioned before, there'll be a lower entrance for the lower level parking, and then you'll come up to the upper level parking and enter at this location here. You'll travel through the building to an outside area where there's a couple additional spaces. So what you'll have is you'll have an entrance down here with a front lobby, where there's a whole pedestrian area for bicycle racks, et cetera, a handicap space, the garage door to go in, and then this combination of the spaces out in front, a couple over here, and on this side, there'll be 12 exterior parking spaces along with the interior, upper and lower levels. As discussed, there's landscaping, existing trees along this side that will remain off the property. There's a series of different types of retaining walls, whether they're large boulders, diverse lock block, or poured concrete, because it's just like a set of steps. You're climbing up the hill, and every padside is terrace for each hotel or strip mall that you see. Right now, we would basically take the catch basin that's there now and redirect it down, and we'd have catch basins in front of our property also. The roof drywalls will be collected around the perimeter, and we have a proposed recharge area up here for the roof runoff. Quick math is the existing, we're about 54,000 combination of roof and pavement today. You're going to have a reduction of about 6,500 in pavement when the project is developed. You will have an increase in roof area, but that increase is going to be offset by that recharge of the roof drywall to the northeast. We'll have witness soil testing conducted with the town engineer. We received his comments earlier today, and what I'll just go through that quickly is, we're in agreement that there's basically five aspects that he talked about. One was stormwater, and what we'll do is we'll, we'll look at confirming the recharge from the test pits and look at other infiltration aspects along the frontage. We'll also add some spark raids and pitch the pipes and add a couple extra structures as he requested. In regards to traffic or peer review, everyone knows where we are. Everything leads up north to the highway. So as far as capacity, the applicant is familiar with the demands that Sonic had back in the day, and those vehicle trips per day have dropped significantly lower than the proposed 400 vehicles from the 60 units. We have, basically the overview is, it's about six and a half trips per unit. There'll be 31 trips in the morning at the peak hour and 37 at the evening. Basically, six in in the morning, 25 out as they go to work, et cetera, and then 24 back in and 13 out. So the, the volume of that, we'll be using the back roadway system. As everyone knows, you cannot turn, if you turn right, there's only one way to go is back into the hotel parking lot and then back up. So it's basically a left turn only as you exit the site. So all the traffic will leave the same location. We anticipate additional signage directing drivers in that direction, and we'd also pull back the vegetation. There's some invasives growing along that shoulder. So currently, right now, there's an easement along our property frontage because the pavement is right up to the edge of our property. There's also a drainage easement that cuts across the frontage of our, of this property to allow the drainage above us from the hotel to come across and come down. Right now, there's a drainage ditch that is along the bottom northeast along our frontage, and that continues down to the pond below and behind this hotel to the south of us. So we will not, we'll maintain those same drainage positions. We're going to provide pretreatment and, and to comply with that before the additional pavement is put into that area. Actually, it's a reduction in pavement. And there was a question, number three, was about the water demands. Is a request for a hydraulic water study, and to us to provide separate connections for the water demands and for the, for the hydrants, which we'll do. Any utility that comes from the underground electric, which is proposed to come off a pole through Sonic, there's already an easement for water in Sonic. Those easements will be expanded in, as needed for every utility within the property. Fire department, we're asked to check with them and add any other hydrants that they like, and we'll do that, and we'll look at the turning templates for the vehicles. Sewer demand, there's a capacity study request, and then they'll have their consultants look at the system in the operation maintenance. There's a pump system, pump station for this road, so they'll be reporting back on that. And then there's also whatever our sewer demand is for the 60 units. We're asked to double that number and, and improve a sewer line somewhere to remove some infiltration from the sewer lines today, so that there's a net benefit for that aspect in regards to demand. That's the overall overview of that in regards to the comments that we did get, and so I guess the applicant is requesting that the traffic study be considered by the board as what is the anticipated outcome that you get. And basically, what we're seeing is signage, additional clearing for site distance, and, and that's what we offer, is to reduce that scope. I'll let the architect talk.
Members of the board, David O'Sullivan from O'Sullivan Architects in Redding, Mass. What we're proposing, we've basically designed this building to fit into the slopes, as the engineer said. We have a lower level garage that comes in pretty much at grade off the Hotel Boulevard. That is also our main entrance off of there, with lobby, elevators, mail, room, et cetera, utilities coming in off of there. The upper level of the garage next one up is basically accessed on the side of the garage. And so the parking is pretty well evenly done. We have actually, flip to the other page, but in this area is a secondary entrance on the upper level, and we have indoor trash to control the trash and recycling, so it's not exterior. So we planned an indoor where the trash will be brought out to the driveway when it's collected, but for the trucks, but otherwise it'll be, yeah. Thanks. You can just turn it up. So right in there is the trash room, right next to the door, and just parking, and basically upper lobby elevator. Going up to the next floor, which is the first residential floor, what we have is, over the top of the garage, we have a one-story space. We've yet to program this fully, but we basically have made the units in a U shape with a one-story structure here on top of the garage, which will be a common room that'll have amenities for it, such as a gym, club room, et cetera. And then there's an outdoor space here for residents to use as outdoor space, and we did this on kind of the south side, so it gets the best light. And then there's units on this floor wrapping around that. The next floor up, which is pretty typical of all the other floors, is basically just filling partial the courtyard, leaving part of it open. That outdoor space out, is out here on the building, so this is the rest of the units. The unit breakdown is 38 one-bedrooms, 16 two-bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms. So they all have, all the units would have laundry within the unit, individual utilities. Most of them have balconies and gal, and balconies along the side for their own private outdoor space as well. If you take that board down and go to the other board, it's right behind it. So the exterior, this is the front, front facing the Hotel Boulevard with the garage entry here, the main residential entry here. There's a little trellis and canopy over it, and kind of an element here that trying to accent the front entry. You can see balconies along here inset into the building units. The exterior of the building would be kind of a combination of hardy panels, pretty much trying to get it as maintenance-free as possible, large windows, a variety of colors that, I'm sorry, don't show up too well on this, but dark and light colors to add some variety to it, and the base would be kind of a masonry feel to it. And you can see that entrance drive going up on the side. If you flip to the other page, just, this would be the other side. This is facing the north side here, and that's the other garage door coming out to access those exterior spaces. This is the side that's facing Sonic, so the garage is only one level towards the Sonic building, and then there's the residential above. All the units, as I say, would have their own private utilities, would have mechanical equipment on the roof. We're basically have a fairly good height on the building. We're trying to make sure that these are luxury units, so we have nine-foot ceilings. I think the high point on it, from the lowest point to the highest is 73 feet, 11 inches, but that would be less towards the Sonic side, but it's still under the height of the adjacent hotels on either side of it. So that's my pretty much synopsis. If you have any questions, let me know. Go from there.
Through the chair, just had a question on the parking. I see there's 91 spaces for 60 units. I think it was a 1.5 something per, per unit. Are the, are the parking spaces going to be assigned for the units? Is it going to be one parking space for the one, for the one bedroom and two for the two and three, and then will there be about six or seven visitor parking, or is that the breakdown basically?
The intent is to have some outside spaces visitor and do one per unit, and then probably depending on how it goes with the affordables versus non, the other remaining kind of 30 spaces will be distributed.
And then my next question is, do you happen to know how many parking spaces Sonic has and whether or not they have any available spaces that could potentially be leased to the apartment complex?
Yes, I can lease it to myself, but yes. So inside of it, if you look at Sonic, there's 26 stalls. Out of the 26 stalls in the drive-through, that's the main part of the traffic. There's 10 spaces just to the front of the building, in between where the billboard went. Along the side of the building, we probably have in excess of about another 15 or 18 spaces, and then along the back. Once we're done, we figure out a final kind of design and landscape plan, we'll work that. There is also, one of the neighbors north has some excess space. We were letting them use our parking lot for the hotel, so we might look at doing some of those things along it. There is also, if you notice, we own the strip all the way down the street. That will be cleared and cleaned up. There's actually space along there in the hotel entrance. We have some spaces down below that also.
And I did notice that in the packet that we received and reviewed, that there was a Exhibit 9, a purchase and sale agreement between JAM Enterprises LLC and JAM 3 LLC to be submitted to the ZBA. Has that been submitted yet, and if it hasn't, when can we anticipate that?
So we're going to, it's between ourselves, so what we're going to do is then execute that, so the purchase and sale, we're just going to do a quick claim deed and do that. It's all part of, once approved, we'll then be subdividing and then do a purchase and sale to ourselves on it. Okay? It's kind of conditional upon it getting approved that I split it, but yeah.
We'll get, we'll get to the, the form of the document. It is necessary to demonstrate site control for purposes of Chapter 40b, so you will have that shortly. I had hoped to bring it with me this evening.
Okay, thank you. It's all from me for now. Thanks.
Through the chair, the, with respect to the traffic study, obviously the 400 trips make sense, the traffic study is what it is. The question I had was, was any study done with respect to the intersection of Hotel Avenue and Dearborn? That's the only area that I can see having some issue with respect to the additional traffic. Obviously, Route 1 has an incredible amount of vehicles, but that hotel to Dearborn, especially where it comes up over the hill and a little bit of a blind turn, that was one little concern. I didn't see that addressed in the traffic study.
Yeah, so, and again, I'll let the engineer speak, but on my behalf on it, so originally when we did the Sonic and it was designed, it was designed up for tips as high as 10,000. That back entrance is going to be cut off and separating Route 1 from the front end, and people do use it for a cut through. The average trips now when we went into normal volume where you're in year 10 is roughly, per month, we have, we serve about 5,000 customers. So the count's down dramatically on there. We will clean up and do the landscaping in. Again, we'll, we really think what we're going to be doing is pulling off normal flow that's coming in there and goes into the back. I'm not against working as the peer review and with the city to do what they think makes sense for the flow. The biggest challenge I have with the traffic study is anything that kind of will prohibit timing, because we're in pressure one from the approval. Rates are really good right now, and we did want to get, moving the project along. So I just wanted to balance it. It's not trying to skirt around it. It just, I don't think it'll give us anything more than what the engineers and peer engineers would look and say, here's what we want to do within the area, and I'll work with the city to do that.
Okay, yeah, as long as there's some work with the city there, just to make sure. That was my only point of concern with the traffic. The, the movement of the existing exit way and entrance towards Hotel Avenue, if I heard correctly and saw correctly, I believe the package says that's going to be dropped down towards the south side a little bit more, closer to the boundary of the property, or did I mishear that?
The roadway, pretty much what's paved there now, there's gravel to the left that's just going to be done. So it wasn't developed prior, and now it's cleaned up, and there's a nice retaining wall to the south of us, to the south. So all we've been doing is basically paving that area. The actual road area now is probably a little bit wider because it had two-way traffic, and it was allowing a cut through. That will narrow, we'll probably move it just about 10 feet onto the gravel, and it'll allow for the, a little bit of a wider swing going into the garage.
And do we, I'm assuming it's probably in the hydro, hydro study, but do we know, or do you know how that will impact the strip mall and the hotel to the south, since you'll be moving that a little bit closer?
There's, again, the water will be self-contained onto a lot. The catch basin that's there now is actually set back in the gravel. So we're using the existing infrastructure that's there. We weren't looking at adding anything or having any overflow over the wall.
So what's there now will be sufficient to maintain it?
Correct.
Okay.
I just have two on, and I'm sure that it's just a little typo, but on the 1, 2, 3, the fifth page where it says project schedule, you have summer of 2000, applicant anticipates marketing efforts for the units to begin in the spring of 2019 with occupancy in early fall of 219. You need 220.
Correct.
Yeah.
It was originally, I'll give you a little backstory on it. We bought, we purchased the property, ExxonMobil. One of the things that needed to be cleared, they had a restriction on the title that no residential units could be done. It was never developed. It took us a year to get that done. It's now been recorded. That's what was the delay.
Okay, that, no, I, I knew, I just figured it was a typo. And the ventilation from Sonic, is that going to be a problem for the, for the residents? I mean, do you, is there any?
No, this, so on the ventilation that comes out, it's got a full, so it's got a scrubber and a ventilation system that sits on the roof. That actually was just replaced. We just replaced the air conditioning systems on it? No.
So there's no smells or anything that going to interfere with living?
Nope, no. A lot of it's self-contained in there, and there's a lot of recirculation into it. The oils are recirculated, so no.
Okay.
The main grill goes up, and it actually has a scrubber and filters, and it's actually cleaned twice a month.
And the only other comment I have at this point is, I have to tell you, this is one of the best applicants. This whole thing is so very well done. I just want to thank you. It really was very-
This is why I love Ruth.
Very well done.
That makes up for the typo.
Any other questions?
No, it just wasn't updated.
Hi, my name is Ed Colbert. I do have a question regarding safety. School buses, student access, how will that be accomplished with the main road, Hotel Avenue out back being one-way at that point?
It's, well, the access is actually two-way just to the south of us. It's two-way down to the hotel, so that is actually two-way and it's actually wider. When we do the front of our building, we'll actually have a swing-in. So again, it's a great point. We should bring it up, we should make sure that we allow bar. But it is two-way traffic that allows a swing around in there, so we should make sure we look at the front access of our building for that.
I'm not 100% sure if school buses are allowed to be on private property. What I observe on Route 1, I've been living in PBD, off of Route 1 for 40 years. School buses at the other locations of apartments, small motels and so on, they stop at the driveway. They actually park on Route 1 with their flashes on. So I'm not sure if somebody should contact the school department and find out if school buses are actually going to be allowed to go into your property. Because if they're not allowed to go in, I think it's a safety issue on Hotel Avenue.
Okay, great point. We'll contact them and we'll come up with a plan that works and report back.
And as others have said, I came from the construction industry. I'm just an old retired guy now, but this is a beautiful set of documents, bullprints. I don't know how you're going to fit everything into that space, but it looks well done.
Thank you. One point that I do want to make sure that everyone's aware of, so we're not only just building this, it's not going to be sold, this is actually for private investment. So myself and my wife are the actual principals. Win Property, not the casino, but Win the Larger, they're actually our, they're the residential division. They're actually the management company. So they're going to be doing both our buildings and also some additional ones that will look in the future. So we've done not only this, which you've seen the professionalism here, we plan to carry that through and we're taking their expertise to run and manage the building. The lottery and all the other things are all done and actually in the packet.
And that's a very good point. I just want to expand a little bit on Ed's concern about school buses. There's no doubt that when this is complete, you will have children that go to PBD schools. The JRM recycling site, somewhere around that area, it used to be the old Carriage House motel. We had a lot of children there. And Eddie, the bus was, because it's on Route 1, the bus was able to go in to the Carriage House, stop and allow the children to come in. But if you weren't thinking about school buses and turnaround and safety, that's something that you really need to consider because that will be a definite.
No, absolutely. Okay.
Is it this time from the board? I am. Okay, I just have a couple of more things, but I'm going to wait. I'm going to open this up to the public. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor or opposition or just want to comment?
Thank you. I'm Joel Sasslaw, 21th Avevento Circle, PBD, Mass. Ward five, councillor. I'm very happy to see this project tonight. I had the opportunity to meet with Greg probably over two, probably over two years ago to talk about the project, to see it come to fruition tonight is very encouraging. And as you can see from the plan, everything is very well thought out. Just some of the concerns, I'm going to reiterate a couple of things that were already brought up tonight, but by and large, I am very happy with what is presented before us tonight. We just talked recently about the school bus and I had an opportunity to have a discussion further earlier today with someone in addition to that. So I think that's been vetted well enough and I know that Greg and his team will take that into consideration. One of the things, I tried to go through the plan, but I don't think it was in there, but I did hear your team talk about it tonight, was I was happy to hear some discussion about some outdoor recreational space because at some point you will have some children living at this facility of 60 somewhat apartments. So obviously I think that's a good opportunity that you've taken advantage to address that. Regarding the trash, I had a couple of concerns, but it looks like, so is all the trash going to be in the basement and then kind of dump, you know, a, for lack of a better word, a dump truck will come in and grab it through the basement? Is that, is that correct?
So I can address it. So same as that we do in the other, actually no, the trucks won't be entering, so they'll actually go into a consolidated room. They'll actually be compressed and separated, so the recyclables, those are then, and they're wheeled out. The truck then comes and removes them and they'll have two pickups a week. So the trash will be collected throughout the building. It's brought into a central room, it's compressed, and that system is actually done in concert with JRM. So Peter got ahold of us. We've designed our past building. He'll be doing the same design in this building, so they'll actually own and operate the system and work with us on that. Okay?
Very good, thank you. And then it was addressed by one of the board members this evening. I do have some concerns with the spaces. I do know that you obviously own the property next door and you talked about your neighbors because my quick calculation was if you have 90 spaces and if we make the assumption of 30, one space for every one-bedroom, two spaces for the two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, that came to 82 spaces. That's not including any guests and that's not including, that's also assuming that every person, every one-bedroom, there might be a couple that might need a second space. So I'm comfortable with the fact that you're looking at that because I said, I do think that is going to be a little bit of an issue if you don't address it as far as, you know, neighbors not being happy and just not enough parking and obviously visitor parking. So once again, you did bring that up on the radar tonight. And then the last thing, and it's a minor point, they're not here, but I'm sure if they had any concerns, but just to make sure that it is a little bit of a compressed area, just to make sure that you have enough room for the emergency vehicle access. More importantly, I would, I'm talking specifically about the fire department and where their vehicles are usually a little bit larger and longer in length than, say, a regular police car. But as I said, I'm looking forward to it. I think it's a good addition and it would be great to see fall of 2020, if we can get some people in there by then, that'd be, that'd be awesome. So good luck, thank you.
So councillor Sasslaw, you are in favor of this?
I am in favor of it, yes.
You very much. Anybody else to speak in favor, in opposition, or comment? Okay, I just have a little request, I guess I can say. You obviously got the comments from the city engineer and the, yeah, the PBD municipal light plant. And I know that you quickly, which is fine, quickly, you know, you commented on most of them, but I personally would be a little happier and more confident if you could give us written responses to these. And I think we'd better be, and then we could let the department see before we meet one more time. I would imagine one more time. I think that would be the best route to go.
And I think our engineer will be in touch with the city engineer as well to clarify certain items, to make sure that that communication remains open so that we can have as productive a dialogue as possible and, yes, absolutely.
You think so? Barry?
Just to add to that, and I would be comfortable, and, you know, sometimes it's shame on us, but I would really like to have an opportunity to give police, fire, maybe the health department. Planning Board hasn't met, they plan a meeting August 1st. We did hear from PMLP. School department, we do have a couple of issues regarding the school department, so I'd like to give them a number of opportunities to respond. I certainly, looks like a great presentation. I don't see them not responding in a way that you can't work it out, but I would like to get those comments from those departments if you don't mind.
Understood.
Thank you.
And if they don't have any comments, then that's okay too, but at least it's an opportunity. That's a good question. So how long do you think you need before you come back to us with these?
What's your, when's the next meeting?
Meet as soon as August 5th. Usually meet the third Monday of the month. We usually never meet in August, but we are meeting in August for a few other things. You know, this is a very nice, you've worked very hard on this. I don't want to hold you up. You do have planning board, August 1st. You, what do you think?
I mean, if you can meet as soon as the 5th, I think, give us, if I ever run into a problem, I'd like to respond tomorrow, but I'd like to just keep that date, get out to the other departments. This has been something we've have worked very closely with the city on, so I know planning's aware of it. Let us go in and come back.
Of course. Okay, we are going to put, we are going to put you on the August 5th agenda. Hopefully you'll have everything ready. We will hear you at 6:55 PM.
Great, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you very much.
So with that, we'll make a motion to continue this public hearing, leaving it open until the August 5th meeting.
In favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.